Great success. So it describes to you things like, uh, the land, the topography, the availability, uh, everything you would normally find. Mike, you're probably closer to this than anybody, but how, uh, what real estate appraisals look like.
Yeah.
The last, the other piece that you see in there is just a black and white photograph of what it looks like now. And then also the map that you've already seen that Tom pointed out that Mike has. So that's that, right? That's, that, that answers the question of what is this land? What is it? Who, who, who in a third party manner looked at it? And what does it give us in terms of curb cuts or access or things like this? There's obviously a lot here.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it's a lot to take in. And I think Tom is correct when we say that, um, this is the piece, uh, that allows us to take a look at the possibilities that could happen in this particular plot. Um, the first thing you'll see here is, uh, some additional parking, which extends past the Curious George Cottage and the, uh, Observatory. And, uh, the addition of what you already have as an existing walking path, I don't know if some of you know that, but there's a really nice beautiful path, it leads all the way up to here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, our thought was, hey, let's take this and extend this around the entire property to give it that kind of closure. It's also safe this one point of egress at this point, the way it looks, in that, with the tree boundaries all the way around, we protect sort of the noise and stuff that's here with forest rim. Um, we obviously would be having a fence through here. And the trees, nothing got cut here. Everything is still the same. When you walk this property, when you drive by this, you can't see the field really, uh, in use at all. You cover the parking lot here, that's thirty-five. This has thirty-one lots. Uh, the thought was, maybe in some earlier phase, you just use the existing playground area now, you just make a lot right there. And you, you, you save the existing gardens that are here already. So, when I saw this, I said to Tom, what would it look like if we did a bunch of things in here, aside from what we're already gonna move forward and do? And, uh, at the school board, the thought, right, um, Brooke, was that basketball was needed. And this has got four basketball courts on it, right? It really, it just shows you that you can fit. All of this is true to scale. Uh, this building right here is a hundred and twenty-five feet long. The pool right here is eighty-two feet. So everything was done to scale from this. So let's say that Tom decides to pitch a soft, a softball to Mark, and Mark pulls out his bat from nineteen-eight-five. And he's standing there and he says, it's a softball, and he's gonna crush this ball. And he hits a ball from here. It's two hundred and twenty-two feet to here, but then he really crushes it. Just to give you the scale of how big this is, and he hits the ball into the parking lot. Right here where this dot is, I would be able to run in the outfield and catch this ball, maybe if I'm fast enough. But I wouldn't find my park because that's the left field wall. That's the green monster right here. Okay? The addition of the safe playground, one means of egress. Controlled through here. Public safety, in and out. People can't see it too much, it looks the same. A multi-use pavilion. You're looking at seventy-seven seats right there with a stage. And community gardens, maybe these are flowers. Maybe this is food, agriculture. You have science and biology classes. You have painting classes. This trail, in the future, becomes an interpretive trail. And so I learn about moose, and bear, and deer, and chipmunks, and flora, and fauna, and white birch trees. It tells a story. There's nothing like this in the valley.
So I think the genesis of where we are now, when we were talking with Mark, um, because of our big project going on up here, you know, we're, that's where all our funds are gonna be going at this point. Mark, throughout the possibility that perhaps the town and the school, uh, make a contribution to,
I gave him that.
Phase one. Oh, so you have the costs.
I get all that. I, I, I would just, uh, have a couple of quick thoughts off the top of my head. If, if, it's, it's, I like the idea of bringing fields here. I, I think, I think fields here can bring people here. But I also like the idea, and I don't think you should sell yourself short, and this is my own opinion, that you need some kind of dormitory or housing for people, because if you're gonna bring groups here, we, we run into the problem with the hockey academy and everyone else, no one having a place to house these groups for short terms. So I, I think it's naive, not naive, but I think it's something that you should experiment with. And, and going back to the idea about dorms, what about bathrooms?
Do I know bathrooms are packed with field right now?
No, I understand, but packed with field is not being, uh, booked out for extended use, which I think you guys have the potential to do.
You know, we, I would, I would also think, Tom, that you would need more parking. And, and if, if you're talking about thirty-one parking spaces and a pavilion with seventy-seven seats, for multi-use, I think we, you should look into a little bit more parking. Uh, also, si- public safety might have some views on egress, and there, you might wanna look at more egress. Or another way, in case you've gotta bring an ambulance onto the field and the parking lot is all parked up, and things like that. But, uh, I like the idea. I like the idea of, of doing something with this land, getting some fields in there, getting some groups up here, where people are coming back to follow them over the valley. I think it's important to bring new groups up here and new families. And I think, uh, it's great. Figuring a way to fund this and partnership is, is gonna take some time, and I think it would probably have to go before the town meeting. There would have to be a proposal coming up as to what your costs are, uh, how you wanted to split them up, what is it, what rights does the town get to this, how long it's going to take. And all that, so if, if a plan came up like that, as away from, I, I, looking at the plan here, that's lovely and all that. But I think we have to find a funding methodology that we can present to the town, to put before the people, to see if the townspeople are willing to help with this endeavor.
And keep in mind that the, this here is just what, what fits. It's just for scale and scalability. It's not.
Oh, no, I, 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 I understand all that. Another question I would have, are you gonna, in part of your expansion, are you gonna add some more tennis court, indoor tennis courts? Cause I know that's something you need.
Well, we have the land going straight back.
Right.
Straight back.
Right. No, no, I, I've got you. I've got another question about the, uh, where the shuffleboards are and all of that area there.
That way, so. Mm-hmm.
Isn't that wet? Are we gonna have some wetland issues through there?
Well, there's, there's, in the proposal that Mark gave you, those green sheets, there's drainage all along the side.
I understand, but cutting into the wetland is the issue, my question. I don't know if it is or not, that's why I asked you.
No, no, it wasn't. It isn't. It is not wetland.
I'm sure that's some kind of environmental study done. Yeah, that, that's a valid point.
Right. So I think the environmental, figure that in your budget too, environmental study, not just the cost of doing the work here.
I thought we had that, that it was not wetlands.
Right, well, if you look at the, uh, summary, and it says, um, top agr- uh, where is it?
Topography.
It's, uh, well, the subject site is outside the floods. It's a flood zone X, which is nice, but it's also, uh, environmental site assessment on page two. The appraisers have not been provided with an environmental site assessment. It's the assumption that this report is clean and not subject to psych entitlement. But that doesn't address what you're talking about, which is, hey, you have these little wet areas, what are you gonna do with them?
Right, and I think. Right, and if we come into an issue where we'd get, before we approach, I mean, we need to have this, to be able to hand a town meeting a full, full plan,
Mm-hmm.
with everyone with all the eventualities thought out, instead of having a, a big discussion at town meeting and realize we've missed something.
I don't think that would be our aim. I think our aim is to do exactly as you said. Today is just, hey, here's this land.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, no. No, no, I, I have been a proponent of something like this for a long time.
I mean, we're, we're open to anything. I mean, if the town thought that this was in their best interest to purchase it, and you guys control it, and you develop whatever, we would be interested in anything. So anything is on the table.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't know if that would be the cleanest, depending on how much activity happened there that Brooke and the town were in charge of. Yeah, you know, I think it might be cleaner to have one entity in charge of the whole thing, rather than having multiple owners.
Right, but I, I also think that the town, just, just my, my thought, we're, we're managing a town, we don't wanna manage another proprietary, uh, enterprise.
It's just throwing it out.
But.
I think phase one here provides safety for the kids that are playing in the parking lot right away. I think it gives everybody some breathing space to see what it looks like as a green field.
Yeah. Right.
I think you're right about having the Department of Public Safety involved with this.
Now, is your thought to do this green field right away?
Uh, not necessarily. No, as I mentioned at the beginning, our project that we, that's on the burner now is the outdoor pool area.
Oh, okay. That's our priority.
So what is the total of, of this bid here? Dirt Designs is not totaled. And someone is saying per yard?
Okay. About a hundred thousand. It's about, yeah, with contingency.
Yeah. Okay.
That's cutting the trees.
Hundred thousand to, to.
Oh, no, I, 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 I understand what's in there. It's just, it, it wasn't totaled up, but it was per unit and not individual units and all that stuff.
Yeah. Right.
But I think it's, it's a, this is a great starting point for a dialogue on this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, one other thing to be aware, I mean, I mean, I was just, when I saw this, cause I know you're, this is special civic land.
Right.
I read the zoning on special civic land. Now, I, I haven't seen this before, but there is this line in here that says, essentially, any development, and I'll read it to you, it says, "Any development proposed on special civic land must be approved by submitting plans to the planning board for final approval by selectmen." What the hell is that?
So you mean just to cut trees and what, as a, as a develop?
No, 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 to cut, cut trees is, is by, if all their intent was to go in and harvest the timber for the purpose of getting the timber.
Right.
They have a right to do that, and they don't need any.
But if you're gonna build fields or parking lots or paths.
But if you're gonna build a field, I don't know, would that be a development?
See, that's my, that's a good question, because a field, you, you, you're re-.
Yeah, I think it constitutes a land improvement.
Well, I would suggest that you, you know, you'd probably have to go to the planning board and present, and really start with the planning board more than the board of selectmen and say, here's what we're, you know, here's what we would propose to do. Um,
Okay, so.
I don't know, Mark.
Well, I, I think that statement says it's gonna be both the planning board and the selectmen. Well, I think.
Yeah, the selectmen threw me for a loop, cause I don't know why normally it requires no approval on our part.
Right, I don't know why we're, I think it's because it's special civic, and I think that's the reason.
Okay. Yeah.
But, but I think, as long as you don't have any immediate, big problems with this, we just keep working through the process. I mean, that's, that's the.
Oh, yeah. Well, I, I do know, and may, and maybe Mark, you know, that the, the wetland study that was done has identified four major wetlands in the town. Is this one of them?
Yeah.
See, I'm, I'm concerned is the way the water drains out by the front.
I don't, I don't.
There's wet.
Yeah, because there's no swells in there.
It's, it, it, it is not, no.
There's, there's a creek that runs behind forest rim, and that area just, yeah, yeah, exactly.
There are, there is a creek.
I don't think, I'd have to look at the plan, and I don't think this is.
We'll have to take a look. There were, cause I think what we're heading towards is, there's been four major wetlands developed.
Right.
Those, they're gonna get fairly restrictive on, and the rest, they're not gonna bother with.
Right. Right.
And, uh, although they're still debating that.
We'll have to look at the map.
I think we were told that our land was not part of that.
Yeah, well, we just don't know.
I mean, I think when it was done.
It always depends on who you ask, that's the problem.
But other than, other than.
Yes, one guy tells you one thing, you ask another guy, he tells you another. But I do know there is a formal study that's identified four major wetlands. I think we oughta, you know, we oughta let them know whether it is or isn't involved.
Okay, I can check that easy tomorrow.
Margaret, what do you think? Any questions?
Um, yeah, I think it, I think it's a good idea. The other thing that was, uh, going off in my head is that I believe there is still money in the town quarters for the improvement of the Curious George Nature Trail that has not been used. It's, I mean, it's under ten thousand dollars.
Yes. So, well, about fourteen thousand.
Oh, it's fourteen thousand dollars. So it's something, something to think about, um, in, in terms of.
It's gonna be the Curious George Field.
It's funny, Mark, Mark, but I, but I said.
No, I mean, but the, you know, right now, that, this portion that you're talking about, right.
The parking lot.
Tuts off a piece of it. Right. And I pointed that out to her, yeah.
Right, but, but there's, if, you know, if there, there's probably a way to work with the Ray Center and the town,
I think, Tom.
if you're gonna use something like an interpretive trail to make that happen using some of that money.
Absolutely. I think the Ray Center becomes a little more relevant with this.
The trail part. Yeah.
Uh, dark skies look like they're right on the field now. They're not having a lot of, yeah.
But, but here's, here's another point, thing that you're very important, which you, the point you just made. I was talking to some of the Ray Center people, and since the blue moon has closed, their new traffic has completely evaporated on that location up there.
Yeah.
So I think you, you're very much right as far as drawing a cohesive community together by doing this.
Yeah, and especially where you have, like, if you, if in the future there were to be community gardens, I think that's,
Yeah.
um, the whole thing just seems to fit. Nice.
You know, I, I think in letting the town process this, being able to just cut the trees down, have a field,
Yeah.
have a little bit of expanded parking.
Right.
Start to do some rec programs out there and that sort of thing, and get people used to being there. And then you can look at what amenities, if any, you even wanna put on there. Maybe it just stays a field, who knows?
Right. Right.
And you, and you add the playground.
But, but at least we, you know, and, and the playground, cause you've gotta get the kids off.
Get the kids off of the, off of.
And, and the school, um, is looking at doing that playground, coming in and requesting for the school board meeting in March, money to do that playground where the cottage used to be.
Or the new one.
Behind the, behind the gardens, right in there. So, so I think this is a good time to get them, rather than spend that money there, spend it in this way.
Right. Right, so let's. No, no, I, I, yes. Okay, great. So I can take a, a consensus from us that it's, that we'd like.
No, I, 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 since this may go to the planning board, I can't comment.
Right. Okay, so Bill can't comment, but my, my comment is, proceed, and we, we would be more than happy to look at anything you wanna bring, bring to us as far as going forward.
I, I, again, I, I. I, I think at some point, you gotta talk to Terry Wade about this.
Yep.
Right, that's part of the process of proceeding. It's going to the, talking to the planning board, it's not just, go ahead and do it, cause we say it's okay.
Well, okay, right, I mean, just don't, right, no, 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 no. Yeah.
No, right. He's gotta come in and sign a plan, and I'll talk to him.
Yeah, we'll help you make this, we'll help you take this forward, if it's forwardable.
Alright, that sounds good.
So we, we have, um, the wetlands issue, we've gotta, gotta find out. Is that on your side of the street or ours? Yeah, you should know that.
But you should, you should know that. Right, I mean, we got a map, that shows where they are, I just can't remember.
No, we, we have it, we have the, all I have to do is check the map, but I need to get back to you on, if it's a wetlands area. Understood. Understood.
And get a, and get a planning board definition out.
And then talk to Terry, Terry Wade about the plan.
And see what they wanna, how they wanna handle it. I, I, if all they're gonna do is cut trees and plant the grass field, I mean, if that's phase one, and that's all they're gonna do.
Right, but I think there's gonna have to be some additional parking to make that.
I, I don't know.
There's gonna have to be some additional parking, there's gonna have to be the playground, so we'll, I'll find out from Terry what he wants.
Right.
We're doing it as a chance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I think, I think that's the right thing to do.
Okay.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. Thank you for putting effort into our community.
Thanks a lot.
Exciting.
Thanks for moving us up.
I think what we'll do is leave these here for a while and pick them up at some other point.
Yeah, just leave them.
Yeah, and maybe the planning board people can take the piece.
Okay, and you've got copies of the, all of these?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'll be really cool.
Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, great. Uh, privilege of the floors or second privilege of the floor? I don't see one, so we'll go to approving the minutes of September ninth.
I did have, uh,
Alright.
uh, now, now if I can find it, I think it's on line one thirty-three. I just didn't like the way it was worded. It was talking about the school board meeting issue relative to, uh, the definition of the word.
Can I, can I see your thing right there and find it? Hold on, show it, please.
It said, "The priority use of the gymnasium and multipurpose room is restricting to, to the recreation department because it limits the rec department's scheduling capabilities." Um, you know, I, I would rather say there's some statement here to the effect there, th- this, this, there remains some disagreement over what the word priority means. And then sit, and then go on and say situations have occurred in the past where, you know, things have been canceled. That sentence, it's now written, I don't understand. That's all.
Thank you, Bill. So how do we wanna change that sentence?
I, I would change it just to say that, uh, um, there is dis- there, there's some disagreement as to what the word priority during the school day really means.
Or if it's necessary to the agreement.
Well, no, it's, I, 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 it, it, it gets into the question, I think, as to what it actually means.
See, I don't like the word at all. Okay.
And, uh, I, it, obviously, the school board wants it because they believe it means something. I still can't figure out what they think it means. That's, that's my biggest concern, before we take it out, you know, and they're, they're objecting to taking it out. And if they're objecting to take it out, it's because they believe it implies something. And I don't, I don't know what it is.
I agree with you.
What they think it is.
How would you like the wording changed in the minutes, though?
I, 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 along the lines of what I suggested was, essentially, read, there is disagreement between, there's di- there's some disagreement over what the word priority during the school day means.
Okay.
Or confirms in terms of rights, something like that.
Do you want Sharon to write that up and do the minutes at the minutes?
No, no, it's okay with the change like that.
I'll take that one sentence out and put what you just said, throw that statement in its place.
Yeah, just put it, yeah, in, and then leave the rest in, right, cause the example actually helps.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, anything else in the minutes? Alright, can I get a motion to approve the amended minutes?
I'll, shall we?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, done.
Alright.
Financial update.
Uh, seventy-five percent through the year, as of this week. Um, we do still have the outstanding, we have not received the check for the August.
We did, we received it yesterday.
We did? Is that in? Well, but it's not in because I ran the report. So, the eighteen thousand will be added to the number for the rec, uh, that's in the report, so that's good. Um, we should be making at least around ten thousand dollars between now and the end of the year. That's what we've historically done, so we're fine. Um, third quarter, uh, water, sewer, and trash bills will be going out in the next week or ten days. Um, and then I'll give you, uh, an update after that as to where we are with those departments. Um, the only, the biggest, uh, department that jumped out is the medical department. Um, it's primarily because of, uh, unb- unbudgeted expenses for equipment replacement and, uh, outfitting, uh, some new equipment.
Let me ask you a question on that.
Yeah.
What did we spend forty-five hundred dollars on the ambulance for?
There were two, I, I didn't write down the actual pieces of equipment, but there were two pieces of equipment that we purchased to go, that were replacing. We had initially wanted to repurpose them from the old ambulance, um, but we were not.
So those were not budgeted, not planned on?
They were not budgeted in the one of these.
And they're replacements of existing pieces, so it's nothing new or anything upgraded.
That's correct. Nothing.
One was an IV pump.
There you go, okay.
Yeah, an IV pump. That we thought could get refurbished, but.
Yeah, how much is something like that?
Uh, I, I personally don't know. Uh, some Chris and Jeff were working on.
Okay.
Yeah, I think one of them was twenty-eight hundred, the other one was seventeen hundred, something like that. That's where the forty-five hundred came from.
Okay. And, and the AEDs, how many AEDs?
The AED, we did a, we did an, an AED replacement.
Just one for twenty-four hundred? That's a lot, those things.
Or was it two?
I think it's probably three, because I remember we priced those a couple of years ago. Those are the automatic AEDs that won't let you overshot?
Yeah, and, and, yes, those are the automatic, but we, uh, maintain all the ones in.
Around town.
Around town, so that's, that's batteries, you know, they, they have a certain.
Okay, so it's not, you bought one for twenty-four hundred dollars, you bought it. You bought a couple of batteries and.
Right. No, it was, it was replenishing, uh, and.
The reason that I wrote that way, Mike, was there was one bill for twenty-five hundred to the, the company, so.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, it's, it's just simply, it's, it's a lot of money to order.
That makes Chris feel.
That was AED maintenance for all the AEDs in the town.
Okay, and is that in the budget every year?
Uh, it's, I don't think so, because it's like a three-year cycle, and I don't think we anticipated, I think it was something that, that ended up getting left off.
Okay, so that's.
So we didn't realize it was the third year.
Alright, so it's something we've gotta pay a little bit, attention to. Okay, cool. And, uh,
We've spent.
A hundred percent of the Lakes Region bill for the year already?
We get billed twice a year by Lakes Region.
Is that a flat fee?
That's, it is a flat fee. Well, it gets, it gets calculated as part of their budget each year, but it is a single amount to us.
Okay.
Based on our population assessment.
Okay.
Um, how many calls we have during the year that's.
Okay, so it's not based on calls, it's just based on?
It's, it's, uh, there's a formula that they have that takes other things into account.
Okay. Alright.
Um, the recreation being slightly ahead is because of our summer operations.
Great.
And overall, we're about sixty-five percent for the year spent.
So we're gonna come in a couple of percent ahead in revenue this year.
We are.
Great. Alright.
Any other questions?
No, not on the finances.
Alright. No, okay, I'm, I'm all settled, I can move on. Uh, we wanna do department head updates. Anyone who needs to be somewhere? Alright, then we'll go with Brooke first.
Alright. Um, we are searching for an assistant director, and so we have gotten some good candidate resumes and have started the interview process, and, um, so that's ongoing.
Is that a benefited position?
It is.
Okay.
Um, my goal is to get someone in place by mid-October, so that's sort of the timeline that I hope that comes to pass. Um, after-school program started this week, it's low enrollment. We're trying to determine giving until October first to sort of make some more decisions about that program.
Alright, let's talk about that for a quick second.
What's, well.
Yeah.
So, right now, we have, um, three people signed up.
Hmm.
But the way that we're doing it is not drop-in basis. It's, they sign up for the session, and they commit to, you know, full-time or part-time status. So, you know, in order to make the program pay for itself, you need a certain, a minimum number of people to sign up. I'm giving till October first to meet that minimum. If it doesn't, we will offer probably a, a drop-in type, uh, style at a much higher rate. I've gotten feedback that I, the, the cost is not really the issue, it's just the flexibility that people want. So we're looking at different options.
Okay, good. Tell us, tell us about that. What is, what flexibility are people lacking?
They would like the option to just come at will, like same day, you know, just decide that day that they're gonna come.
Yeah.
So that puts us in a, a situation where we have to staff it, not knowing if anyone's gonna show up. So that's what they would like. That's what they're missing. That's why they don't like this
Okay.
option of the way that I've packaged it as a, as a full or part-time thing, because that is really a reduced rate of eight dollars a day if you do the full time, which is cheaper than what we offered last year. So what people, I'm learning, or what people really want is to just have a flexibility and they'd be willing to pay more for it. So now, just, you know, learning while I'm going, this is something that maybe we can offer for people to drop in at will for, you know, a much higher rate. And if that's gonna work for people, then it will still pay for itself.
So higher rate being what, fifteen dollars for a drop-in day, or?
Maybe, maybe more.
I, I told Brooke, you know, she, she has a number. If, if we have five or six kids, then we could, we could potentially charge two times the daily rate, you know?
Yeah.
Um, if it were less than that, then we would have to charge even more, three or four times the, the daily rate.
Yeah.
Because we have to, she's gonna have two staff people there regardless, because you can't take the chance that you have just one staff member and have eight kids walk in to that day.
Right.
So, uh, you know, I really, I really think that it, and you also should really incentivize having the people pay ahead, right?
Gotcha, gotcha.
So.
No, I think it makes, it makes complete sense.
So.
Have you shared the, this with the school at Gail?
Uh, they, they know, yeah, what's go- what's going on. However, this new idea of, uh, uh, I've gotten some feedback from, um, the PTA, so I'm, I feel that, you know, basically, what I, I can do is give the drop rate, and I have not discussed that with Gail, because that's just sort of materialized this week.
True.
So that is literally gonna probably be talked about tomorrow or Friday as an option, and, you know, there, if you look at the need, there's really only one or two kids that need this service.
Okay.
Right, that's the problem.
Most people, they want this service to be available. So yes, I mean, I know you're very familiar with this problem, so.
Right.
I think that between these two options, you know, we can give people that really need the service a really affordable option if they pay it, you know, in the session. And then for people who just wanna do it on a whim, and they're only doing it once in a while, so paying the higher rate is not gonna be a big deal, might be a good solution. The, the, the part that's, you know, kind of unfortunate is that, anyway you look at this, we're only gonna have a few kids a day. I mean, you know, so it's really a small, it's a very small program.
And what do you, what do you attribute that to? Is it the census of the school? Just the mix we have this year compared to past years?
Um, that and needs. I mean, I've spoken to a few parents, and they just don't, you know, they, they do, they wanna, you know, their kids are in kindergarten.
Yeah.
And they, it's a big day for a kindergartner anyway, so to keep them in the same building for another two hours is just not necessary. So I, I have been sort of talking to some people and.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, that's.
We only ha- i- i- it's, were there, are basically only a few parents? Were both parents are working, where they can't find, go up in childcare?
Yeah, I can only think of one.
Nearly only one.
I can only think of one.
Is that a tuition family or a family in town?
Wow.
In town.
It's in town.
And that's really the only person I can think of that's actually in need, in, in, in that way, in the day-to-day way.
Well, it'd be cheaper for the, cheaper for the town to pay the tuition to send them down to Camp.
So, and that's the other option, do we even run the program?
They don't have to get to.
That's the problem.
Hmm?
It's, they have to get to Camp, and that's, that's the issue that we face. That's why they want it here.
I, I know, I, it's, it's a dilemma we're gonna, we're going to sooner or later. How many, how many kids approximately now are in just the Little Red Schoolhouse?
Yeah.
I think twenty-three.
Oh, I, I think it's only twenty-three in the Little Red Schoolhouse. The others are in high school.
I think I just heard that the other day, the school.
That's right, cause there's, there's six or seven in the high school right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wow, so we're down to twenty-three, we're half of where we were two years ago.
And there's, and there's a lot of kindergartners, I think. At least two sets of twins.
Mm-hmm.
Because they don't have full, all-day kindergarten, a lot of us. Because they don't have full, all-day kindergarten, a lot of us.
Right, right, so that's, that is one of those, yeah, so anyway, it's just, we're trying to problem solve this, we're, we're sort of just starting it, we're trying to give October first, we're trying to make it work.
But you're okay with that tiered approach on the fees?
No, I appreciate the fact that you're looking at this and paying attention to it.
You gotta, you gotta run it, you make, you make the decisions as you think is appropriate, the, it's always the age old, you know, dilemma is how much can you afford to subsidize it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah, and there are the things that our staff can be doing if, you know, nobody shows up, I mean, there are other things that we can be doing, so it's not a total loss.
Great, what else you got?
Alright. Um, fall full East 5K is still, you know, planning phases, we have acquired some, some more sponsors, um, which is great, Roper, All Mountain Real Estate, I mean, All Mountain Rentals and, uh, Water Valley Realty, so that's great.
Why don't you call it the Run for the Realty?
I know, well, you know, it seems that they're really the ones interested because of, um, you know, the coupon and flyer sort of added this thing where if we do, we're gonna do a goodie bag and they, they can put out their, their brochures or whatever they want, those go out to the racers. So, I think that became really interesting to all, you know, just various people, so that's good. Um, we are hosting a ten-mile race this weekend, we started this Mad River Running Club this year, and there's a, it was a four-part running series, three 5Ks, and then this will be the ten-mile trail race on Saturday. It's really low-key casual, you know, some people signed up for it, so, um, that'll be fun. Um, trying to finalize adult tai chi and, uh, cooking class and some more adult programming for this fall. And right now, WBRA is working on this Ma- Water Valley Magazine, I mean, it's really the resort, but the WBRA has, um, a bunch of stuff in it, and we're, we're putting an ad in it, and so that's sort of in the mix right now, it looks really good so far. You got approved for that the other day, so. That's, I think, all I know.
Okay, great, thanks.
Sounds good.
While we have Brooke here, um, Bill, you, you sent the email about being gone from the second to the twentieth, so this joint meeting with the school board.
Right. Right.
Do you, do you wanna do it next week, or do you wanna put it off until Bill gets back, or do you wanna do it while he's gone?
Well, I, I, you know, I, there's certainly no reason that I have to be there, that's how I feel about it, I mean, I, I think this is an issue. I'm just trying to understand what, what, what are both sides looking for there and, and, uh.
What time is it?
Eight, eight at four o'clock.
I, I mean, I, I, you know, they want, what I hear them saying is they want the restoration of the word priority. What I, what I don't know is whether they're looking for exclusive use of the gym during the school day. I, I don't know if they want, and, and if they want, and I have, if they say that, that's fine.
Maybe she made it.
You know, but, uh, you know, because if, or, or their intent would be a shared use during the school day, I don't know what they want.
Well, you should describe it the way Mike described, because I think that made it clear.
Yeah, what did Mike describe?
From seven-thirty to two forty-five, three o'clock, whatever the time, um, the school would use the facility.
Multi-purpose room.
As lo- multi-purpose room and, and the gym.
The gym, okay.
Would use, have the expectation that their use of the, of those areas, they could go in and use them. Unless there was something that she scheduled ahead of time for the recreation department, and that was on the calendar. Once it was on the calendar and the school had said yes, that event for the rec was happening at that time.
If, if, if she produced a calendar that said every, every day from, let's say, just hypothetically, eight to nine.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're gonna have an exercise class, you know, and, and put it on the calendar, and it's gonna be sponsored by the rec department, does that meet, and, you know, assuming that it be an hour, that, is that meet what he's looking for?
Look, for the rec. That meets his intent. That would meet what he would, would be looking for, okay?
Okay.
Other than those scheduled things that Brooke would put on the, the calendar, the school could expect to go into either one of those facilities any other time.
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc, whenever they wanted and use them.
So, what's the problem?
But this is, this is the existing.
And then at two forty-five, it would flip-flop so that Gail would have to schedule something, otherwise Brooke could use those facilities on an ad hoc basis, okay? Now, Gail does not want that, Gail wants to be able to walk in at any time.
And say she can have it because she has priority.
And because she has priority, no matter what is happening in there, stops, and the school uses it. And really what she wants is seven-thirty to two forty-five, nothing goes on in there so that she can walk in at any time and have an.
Right.
But that's not what she has now.
So, so they don't agree.
That's not what she has now.
No, it's not, and what, really what Mike outlined for us all to understand was what is already in existence.
Well, I don't think it is. Right, yeah.
We already have this calendar going, I do, I did interpret it as I am trying to limit my use of the multi-purpose room during school hours.
Right, right, that's right.
And I think I will definitely pay closer attention to that.
Okay.
Um, but I think the gym, we're on a good program there, we have in, we have inserted our programs between the places where they're not using it, or they're not in it, and that is already a working relationship.
Yeah. Right.
I will make reasonable accommodations when asked.
So, what's? What's the problem?
Well, there, I, I just.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
There was clarity.
No, she wants kind of one, to be able to walk in and go on.
If. Oh, no, 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 Gail does.
Yes.
But if, if that's the definition of what priority is, I don't have a problem reinserting the word priority.
Yes, right. Okay.
If it means that, that, that they get to first determine what schedule they'd like, she then adds what other, in the remaining time, what other classes or uses of the gym she permanently wants to do every week.
Right.
And that becomes a schedule.
Perhaps we get Mike to put into writing what he said that was very clear to everyone sitting around those tables, and then that is something that we look at and say, I mean, I think that made it.
I mean, I can live with that.
Okay, we get that out on the fourth of eighth.
We can too, yes, we will, I'll call, I'll call Mike tomorrow.
Is that Mike, Mike Furble?
Yeah, I assume so, I was on, so you're going, I didn't say.
No, 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 right.
Mike Furble.
But, I mean, but I, but if, if it's Gail, then my position would be, well, I, I hear you, but I don't think that was ever the intent when this thing was set up.
Oh, sorry.
So, if you're asking for that privilege, I think we're gonna have to go back, explain it to the voters, let the voters figure out, if they wanna dedicate it.
Right.
Fine, there'll be nothing going on in there other than school kids, you know, nothing's going on it.
Yeah, and that is the answer, because then you have the answer from the voters, and that makes it really clear.
Right. You know, I mean, if they're building, it's the voters' building, I can't.
Right, that's the point, it's the town's building, not the school's building, right.
It's the town's building, not the school's building, right.
But I'm not sure that they think that.
They don't think that.
They don't, and they need, that needs to be reinstated.
The school isn't even their building.
As a point of fact. Right.
But.
Well, no, and I don't have a problem saying that, but a very kind banner.
The, the school, the school, if the school goes out of business tomorrow, Mark, it's my understanding it refers to the town.
That's correct.
It does not belong to the SAU, right?
Right, well, no, it does not belong to the SAU.
But.
The, the thing is, we used federal and state money.
Right.
Building aid, remember when they used to have that program, right?
Yeah, sure.
There is somehow a clause in there that says that the school, uh, board, the Waterville Valley School District.
Right.
Controls that building.
Because it's thirty percent.
Because it wa- because we use building aid to build it, so.
So, it becomes a little cloudy.
So, we, it becomes cloudy because of that building aid, and that's what the school, a member of the school board is saying.
Did we use, Bill, did we use?
We did use building aid on part of, part of the building.
Well, maybe they got a point, maybe it's, maybe.
Yeah, that was their, that was their argument.
That was, that was part of the argument, and I would have to clear that up with the SAU office as to exactly what that means, because we've used town money to build a lot of that campus.
Alright, let's.
So, we, we need to clarify.
Let's see if we can't get an agreement, if we need to, if we need, if we're gonna go down the road of who, whose building does it belong to? Well, lawyers arguing.
That's right, and, and we have one or two school board members who are, who want to have this cooperative approach to it.
Perpetual expressions.
Right.
And want both, uh, organizations to use the building, so, hey, you know.
Okay.
Alright, let's move on from this one.
I'll get Mike, I'll get Mike Furble for it, right.
Yeah.
Alright, is that, not exactly.
Any other questions?
So, we're gonna still go with the eight?
Right.
Right.
Alright. Jim?
Um, I'll let Dave go first because I think I'm gonna be here longer than he.
Okay, Dave.
Um, nothing, we're just finalizing the generator project this week, uh, just sipping up a few things on the inside, uh, but as.
And all the panels have been replaced and all, everything?
Yep, everything's, everything's in, uh, the testing, the, um, company was in, did start up and did all the testing and everything, worked like it should.
Spanking it.
Uh, we had training just yesterday on its operation, and, uh, so everything looks good, I'm just gonna close out the grant, uh, by the end of next week.
And we are under budget?
Uh, we're right to the penny.
To the penny, at budget or under budget?
At budget.
At budget.
So, we're not gonna get a little surprised next week, like, need a new IV pump?
No.
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 Alright, let's, let's.
The, um, I don't know whether you saw, Mark, I sent you an email, uh, Chris had sent me the thing on the, the safety manual.
Yes, I have.
I didn't read the whole thing in detail, two hundred forty-five pages, but I went through a bunch of it, and I did have four or five comments. Um, relative to, uh, one, they talk in there, it, it's, they talk in there like the, the safety committee is hypothetical, and, and it shouldn't, it sounds like this is the recommendation of the kind of committee you need, and I, I would rather say, we're gonna have a committee, right? It's not hypo, I, I think you do need a safety committee. I, and I had a few suggestions, one, they wanted to do, they said that an audit, a safety audit once a year, I think you ought to do it twice a year. And I'd like, when, if, when you do that, um, immediately thereafter to have the safety committee come back, order selection. And tell us a little bit about what you found, some of the issues you're working on, because I think it would be helpful to keep this front and center for a while. Uh, I shudder to recommend, say this, but you, you might wanna invite the school to participate in the safety committee if they're not already.
We, yeah, we already have a joint, we have a joint committee.
Okay, good. Alright, good.
With the rec and the school.
So, I just had a few.
Yeah, no, I, I like those.
No, I, I think those are good suggestions, well, the, the language that's in there came from Primex, um, so, we just, we'll change it around.
I know, and, and it's. It sounds like they, they suggest we do it.
We already have a safety committee.
I know you do, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we'll change that language.
Yep.
Okay, anything else, Dave?
Um, no, uh, gonna be trying to advertise for some part-timers, uh, part-time, uh, public safety officers are pretty, pretty depleted with the departure of, uh, Matt Bowers, uh, Greg Davis, uh, Timmy being out.
Yeah.
Um, we're, uh, we're getting a little, little short on, on part-time staff, so we're gonna start doing some advertising for some part-timers. Uh, just got cats back today.
Nice.
Um, you've been out for a while, and, and other than that, that's all I've got for you.
Yeah, any feedback to you guys on the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit?
Uh, I've gotten, uh, I don't think I have heard anything negative.
Yeah.
Uh, I've heard only the positive, uh, I've ordered a couple of emails that I got from some second homeowners that came up in August, and it was the first time that they, uh, had some exposure to it. Um, you know, saying it's about time, uh, they very much enjoyed it. Uh, we had a joint bicycle safety day with the school, uh, we, Chris and I spent the whole afternoon with the school and talking about how, uh, those changes affect them, which is, really isn't much. Uh, just teaching good, good driving habits. Uh, we're having our, um, the officers gonna be doing bike patrol, uh, on the weekends throughout the fall, uh, to try to help target some of those, um, difficult spots, like on Boulder Path. Uh, and we feel that if we're on the bike, it's a little easier to address those people who are also on bicycles.
Right.
About good bicycle etiquette, so we're gonna try to, try to exercise that, uh.
I, I have not heard a lot, but, but mostly what I have heard is, is negative, and it's from people who live here full-time.
Yeah.
Just think it's too darn slow, and it doesn't matter if you say them, it takes you seven seconds longer, you know, to do this, it, it's just where they are. Um, the other thing that I have heard is that, um, apparently some of the people that are coming into town to work, the construction folks and that, not paying attention.
Aren't following that.
And, and the perception is they never get stopped.
Okay.
So, just something to keep in mind, I, the person that brought this to my attention, I said, call Dave up, he'll put a car in a different place to catch them.
Yep.
Than where they usually are, you know, kind of stuff.
Yep, we certainly can, if we know that there's an issue, uh, when we know that there's an issue, we can, we can, we can address that.
Yeah. Yeah.
We actually see quite a few people hitting the, uh, the pedal right before Tecumseh Road leaving town. But it's a hard part to get them, when they know it goes up to fifty in three hundred feet.
Yeah. It does, I've, I've caught a few in the last three weeks, and that section seems to be, that's the highest, uh, speed that I catch anyone on Valley Road is coming down that hill. Uh, prior to that intersection.
Alright.
Uh, we should have those dog brochures, should be ready soon.
So, uh, uh, before we leave the bicycle thing, now, the, right now, this is set to expire.
At the end of October.
So, we, you need to, we need to figure out what we're gonna do going forward.
You, you said that we're gonna have a public hearing, I think the intent was, the first meeting in November.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, let's do that.
So, we oughta figure out scheduling that.
Or do you wanna do it the last one in October, would?
Uh, what's the date that it expires?
Uh, well, you said four months, which takes us to the end of October.
Oh, so we can put a hard date.
You can put a hard date.
Oh, I schedule in November, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. Uh, emergency, uh, well, we have here, safety policy, emergency, operations plan, we need Dave for any of these, or are we discussing?
Well, Dave, uh, the emergency operations plan, he can take the forms if you're okay with signing them now.
Okay, that's what you needed with that, I just, I just need your.
Yes, we, yeah, I, 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 well, I could just, we need a motion, right?
Right. Pro motive to approve it and.
Right, no, I, I, I was only jumping, you had to get Dave out, we didn't hear enough to go with that now.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's fine, I appreciate that.
So, we can get back to, let's go to Jim.
We also have placed an ad to address our personnel shortage, so hopefully we'll get some decent candidates and, um, we can move forward with a semi-pulp group. Um, Jennings Peak is slated to start tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And, um, it'll be, uh, first thing we're going to do is, uh, replace the gate valve, and that's the deepest excavation. And that will be the most inconvenient for the residents on Jennings Peak, we're scheduled to shut the water down from ten to two. So, hopefully things will go smoothly and.
Put the door notices in.
Put the door notices on.
I'm gonna go do an excellent amount of work.
Yep. And, um, traffic from Jennings Peak will have to be diverted through Windsor Hill, so. We're set to do that, the tentative paving date for that project is the sixth. And then, uh, once, once they have, uh, completed the work on Jennings Peak, the slated, the, the plan is to move to Beanbender.
Okay. Uh, while we're talking about Beanbender, have you gotten any feedback from the owners of Beanbender as to what they're going to do as far as this project is? Have, you were, you were talking about some of the items, asking them to heat their lines, and you said there's been some dialogue?
The, the, um, not with me personally, but there has been communication, I believe, through our.
With Dana.
And, uh, and, uh, for the homeowner's side of the service line.
Right.
Um, I think the options have been, um, were addressed, or given to them in the.
Right, they've been presented, have we had any feedback on how any of them wanna proceed?
I, one of them was going, the Diaz's, the Diaz's.
Yeah.
Were gonna call Dana, but I have not heard whether or not they have decided to do it.
And, and have you heard from, have you ever heard from Syphilis or is it?
I, I have not heard whether or not they have called, but Joe, I talked to Joe personally.
Okay.
And he was gonna call Dana, think about it, and make that decision.
Okay, so Dana is, is aware that he should be talking to these people before he walks away from there while the ground is open?
Yes, and Joe, when I talked to Joe, he was leaning more towards, uh, dripping, having us do this work, not doing anything on his side, running the water a little bit and working it out with rain, so, and I told him that that was acceptable to the town, so.
Okay.
That was the feedback I got from him.
Okay, and nothing from Paul?
Uh, no, they called and, and acknowledged that they got the letter and said that they would take care of their side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, other than those items, everything's fairly quiet.
What, what about West Branch, what about, uh, the valve replacement over there? What, what about West Branch, what about, uh, the valve replacement over there?
The engineers have finished the plans, uh, and they have sent them to the three contractors and we're just waiting for numbers back from the contractors.
Okay. Uh. Water store project update, so I guess that's, takes care of that, so all stuff.
Yeah, takes care of that.
Any other questions for Jim, Bucks?
No, that's the time of the year.
Yeah. Alright, alright.
Time before the storm, right?
Alright, so, let's go back to our next, uh, regular board meeting is the fourteenth.
Yeah.
He will not be here, Bill?
That's correct.
Alright, Margaret, will you be here the fourteenth?
I will.
Okay, so Margaret and I, planning board on the fifteenth.
Yep, that's fine.
Yep, Bill will not be there either.
No, but that's, that's okay, they function without me.
Not, not an issue. Alright, we'll go to new business now, we'll go to the two sixteen warrant article request.
Uh, you have in your packet, um, a request from the New Hampshire Community Rights Network requesting that's the Selectmen place an article on the March two thousand sixteen town meeting warrant. Um, it is similar, but it's not the same as the article we had on the two thousand fourteen, uh, warrant.
Eric's warrant?
Eric's.
Yeah, I didn't understand this warrant.
So.
Did anybody?
I didn't understand the last one we heard on.
Like, what this is saying to me, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that we can, no matter what New Hampshire has for a law, we can make up our own law that will supersede a New Hampshire law.
That's the way it is in Maine, basically unless you're prohibited by law from making a law, the Board of Selectmen can make a law, any law that.
But in New Hampshire's constitution is.
It goes the other way.
What are they asking, for a constitutional amendment?
They are, they're asking.
So that we don't, no longer a home state rule?
No, so that we become home state, a home rules state.
A home, yeah, okay. Well, I thought we were a home rules state.
No, they say we are, but we're not.
All rights, all rights belong to the state, other than what is granted to towns.
To the towns, that's the way New Hampshire is, they're asking to make it.
Right. But unless it's prohibited by the state, to rule on this.
That's correct, you can do, that's what it means.
I, 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 I don't think that would, would do us well.
It's a much more difficult way to govern.
I can see us there for the fifth hour trying to explain this before the vote.
It does take long.
Uh.
So, your, whatever you would like to do will tell them yes or no.
I, I, I'm leaning towards no, I, I, I don't see why for a little tiny town like this, this is particularly relevant to the voters.
Yeah. Right.
I mean, this is not Manchester or Nashville where you might get some.
Well, they have a city charter anyways.
Yeah, right, there are different rules, you know, we're big enough to, to think that you could do something.
They play by a different rule.
Would anyone like to propose that we amend this?
No, why wouldn't we amend it?
I'll take the silence, I, I mean, uh, adopt this.
No, I, I would suggest we just not put it on the warrant.
Oh, no.
Okay, then I, do we table this or?
Well, we just tell them we're not gonna put it on the warrant.
Tell them, you're not gonna put it on the warrant, I'm fine with it.
Then, uh, someone make a motion that we will not, we will inform them that this is not.
I, I, I'll make a motion that, uh, we do, we, um, do not recommend putting their proposed, uh, art- article on the warrant.
I will second that, all in favor?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
So moved. Alright, budget guidance?
Yeah, I, as I asked you in the, in the packets, i- if there is anything that you want differently this year, is there anything as we start the, the budget process, because we're closing in on the CIP committee, having their first cut at the CIP, go to the planning board. Um, anything, we've got all the department heads represented here, is there anything you can think of going into the budget season that we need to take into consideration as we put these budgets together?
Well, um, I, I don't know what's in the CIP committee, but, uh, um, ma- maybe we oughta wait to, to see that, some guidance in terms of, again, um, my, it's just my personal interest in trying to get some stability around the capital spending portion of the budget so that it doesn't go up and down, it pretty much stays reasonably level.
Right. Okay.
Uh, would I think be, uh, one of the goals that we oughta try to get in place, a way to make sure that that happens.
Okay.
Um, I can't off the top of my head think of anything else on the budget.
I would have to see the CIP, I agree with you completely, Bill, I'd, I'd like to see what we've got coming up to.
Right. Well. Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm looking more for, like, from the operating budget standpoint, is there any way, is there anything that we either present to you that you don't
Right.
Right.
I don't think.
Care about, is there anything that we do not present to you that you would like to see as far as information?
Well.
I think the nature of the budget going forward this year, just because of some certain personnel issues we've had and other things, we're gonna have to be looking at all kinds of different formats to keep ourselves staffed and running, because we've had an interesting year this year. So, I, I think these things will reveal themselves as the process goes.
Yeah, I think, I think the process is a good one, I think we just have to make very sure, I think we had a few hiccups last year as it related to some of the projects and what exactly was included and not included.
Right.
That kinda thing, and we wanna make sure that we have, you know, really good information for both the Selectmen and the voters.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only thing that I would like to going forward is, uh, and I've noticed that other towns do this, on, particularly on the warrant articles, the special warrant articles, that get voted on by both the CIP committee, the planning board, and the Board of Selectmen, I'd like the results of those votes, not the names, but the results listed.
Okay.
So that voters know it was unanimous, or it was two to one, it was two, zero, you know, whatever it is, we, we should list that.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea, Bill. Excellent, anything else on this? Let's move forward, uh, old business, the emergency operations plan, we need to adopt it and sign it, as I understand it.
Okay.
I, yeah, I, when, last, did you get a chance, I think.
I re- I read it, yeah.
Okay, and you're, you're satisfied, I'll make a motion then to approve the emergency, is, operations plan is written.
Yes. Yeah. Would you like to second that?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adopt it. Town safety policy, I think Bill's comments are, are great, so we can move on from that, school of town building use, we've discussed that.
We've already talked about that, yeah.
Trash recycling proposal from the town authority.
That's an interesting one.
Well, you know, I went and spoke to them and so.
So, well, at least they responded.
I think we should definitely pres- uh, talk to them about what's going on.
So, do you wanna review?
What they're, they're suggesting is, is there's a possibility that our residents could ride to Thornton and, and dump their recyclables for a fee.
Yeah. Yes, if we contribute.
Forty fee plus.
If we pay for the building.
If we pay.
Well, not with.
Well, I don't think we're paying for the whole building.
No, they want us to pay for the whole building.
Pay for the whole building.
Is that what it said?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't get that, I'm sorry, I, I am completely.
Didn't it say possibly, the whole building?
No, I clarified with the town administrator yesterday that it is.
If we bought them a building, we could be larger.
If we bought them the bill, if we bought them the building.
Wow.
We could, we could take our rec- people from here could take their recyclables down there, there is no cost for the sticker, but they would not be able to, to take trash also, just recycling.
Right, right, no, we don't have a, it trash is a condition.
So.
And this was a backup, we had talked about this as a backup in the event that we went out of recycling business.
Right.
For those residents that felt strongly that they wanted to recycle, could we grant them access, so I would see very, very limited use of this.
Absolutely, because you have nothing, our trash.
I mean, I mean, it'd be a, a fraction of even what we collect now, certainly, I mean, I'd be willing to pay, if we got that far, I'd be willing to pay some per sticker charge. But, I, I don't think it would amount to anything resembling more than maybe a couple hundred dollars a person.
Okay.
Oh, I, I completely misread that.
Not two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Not two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
And they, they really didn't, um, didn't want the ability of Waterville Valley people to buy stickers, is that correct?
Right, they were just giving us stickers to give, we would control.
But they didn't have another option that said, man of here people wanna buy stickers and.
To dump trash down there too?
Yeah.
No, they don't wanna trash.
Which I think it gets us back to the changes we've already discussed, which is you're gonna order some new dumps, is we need one more time to find, to commit ourselves to getting this one to work.
Yeah. Right.
You know? Which to me is, is, we can get, we can get this.
Missed that the first time. Yeah, I did.
Sorry. We can get this to a break even, uh, you know, if we just are taking recyclables up there every other week.
Right.
Yeah, we just gotta find a way to hold them for a week, then, or, then it's not so bad.
Right, so, let's change that to thanks but no thanks, okay?
Good suggestion, but maybe we'll build the building on our problem.
Yeah, the way this read.
For less than two hundred and fifty thousand.
See, I stopped reading when it got to, is interested in paying for some or all of the building, or the right for our citizen. I didn't go beyond that, I s- I saw the two hundred two fifty, so we paid twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that wasn't the intent.
Yeah, I guess not, alright, great, so we're moving on, any correspondence?
Uh, nothing that I, have.
Okay, privilege of the floor number two. I guess not, board concerns or directives?
Um, I have nothing.
Nothing, so I guess.
Uh, I will.
Well, go ahead.
Oh.
Yeah, I will just mention that I, um, I have met with, um, Chris Gierbrier, you saw the initial draft of that, of the manners thing, and we're gonna change that a little, I'll, I'll circulate that to you.
Yeah.
Um, Chris was hoping to make it a stuffer and, uh, water sewer bills and I, I don't know whether we'll meet that deadline for this time, but we have another one, when do we have our next bill?
I think the end of December, beginning of January.
End of December, oh, okay, well, I'll see if I can get a few things done, but.
We can do a mailing.
This is relative to dots?
No, 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 just the manners.
No, this is, this is the whole thing about, no, it's, it's not gonna say, it's not gonna say that, we're gonna make it a welcome letter and we're gonna, you know,
The man.
I wa- I want that word, I want the word manners, strip, strip. Yeah, okay. Right.
You know, if we're putting a newsletter out with the, with the water sewer bill, we might wanna make some reference to the fact that there is gonna be, you know, a mailing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, it covers a lot of things, it covers noise, it covers fireworks, it covers, um, golfing, uh, it covers bicycled, I mean, just in the, the bare minimum type of thing of, of just being considered other people when you're participating in all these activities.
Yeah, I, you get a laugh, I, I get a laugh, so I'm walking the dog today, right, and I'm on Livermore Road.
Yeah. Yeah.
Have you seen the homemade sign on Livermore Road?
Do you like them?
What?
Do you like them?
What does it say?
There's a, uh, about the horse, somebody, did you put those up?
How long it takes for you to make it?
I got tired of calling the Forest Service.
What, what does it say, I haven't seen this.
There's a homemade sign about, it says like, you know, if your, your horse is pooping here, put a diaper on him.
Put a diaper, clean it up, or ride somewhere else, yeah. No, I, I've called the, uh, the, the White Mountain National Forest has informed me that, um, horses have a right to be on the trail.
They do?
And that unlike those of us who have dogs, who are expected to pick up after our dogs, there is no requirement for people to pick up after their horses. So, now we have somebody who is riding a horse and leaving poop in the middle of the trails.
Do we know who that is?
No, I've never met the person on the horse, I believe.
Okay. I didn't know where the horse would come from.
Yeah, but yesterday was, it was over the.
Have we checked, it's not behind the coffee center, right?
It was over, on the, uh, Deep Woods path, yeah, so.
Wow.
Yeah, and before it was, you know, right out in the middle, I mean, this is where people walk, they ride their bikes, and I mean, it's not at the side of the road, it's right smack in the middle and they just, you know, so.
Wow. Alright, anything else for concerns or directives? Wonderful, so we will go at four ten, we will go.
Well, wait, wait, we have the, well, no, the item that I emailed you, the separate warrant or the separate, uh, email on.
Can I ask if we have any else? Yeah, I'm so confused by that one.
With regard to the Valley Inn.
Yeah.
Well, I.
Oh, yeah, that's, I don't even know what that is.
So. The Valley Inn?
Right, it used to be a house, the, the.
Start at the begin- start at the begin.
I'll, I'll be right up.
It used to be a pri- there is a private house to begin, when the Valley, right, when the Valley Inn was built and the house behind it was built.
Start at the begin.
At the beginning.
Were they built at the same time?
Roughly at the same time.
Roughly or one before the?
I think that was at the same time, they put the water line through the Valley Inn, no, the Valley Inn was built first.
Okay. Okay.
Then the house was built, the water line into the Valley Inn was extended from the Valley Inn, not around the Valley Inn or anything, but literally through the Valley Inn,
Right.
they hooked on to the Valley Inn's water service and attached it to the house.
Okay.
That is where the water for that house comes from, so all of the water that we are currently metering into the Valley Inn, part of that is going to the house.
Goes to the town, got it.
There is, there was a deed which, you know, we showed Stephen Whitley and his response was basically, so I received a phone call from the owner of the Valley Inn.
And who is that?
That is.
Just, I wanna put some names together.
That, um, John, John La.
John?
John La, that position.
Okay, so, John called me and said, would the town please start billing the owners of the house, who are the, um.
Powers or something?
Uh, powers, okay, please start billing the powers separately for water, okay?
Powers.
Because we should not be paying, because we build a Valley Inn on a per gallon basis, right, it's commercial property.
Right.
Um, so they asked that the powers be billed for their water use. When I asked Karina what their water use was, we realized we did not put a meter in because they do not have a separate water line going into their.
Right.
And so, that's how we realized, so I wrote a letter to the powers saying, we need to put a meter in your house. Mister Powers emailed us back, I believe, and said, you don't have to because we get our water, the Valley Inn is required to provide us with our water, so we don't have a, so we don't want you to put a meter in our house.
Right.
And the deed says that?
The deed does talk about it, um, so I asked Stephen if that was still in effect for the powers, because it says for the current owners, which were the Bezars before.
Yeah.
The powers. Um, Stephen has interpreted it that the Valley Inn does in fact have to provide water, as he, as he wrote in the email I forwarded to you. My problem is, we're required by our grant to put a water meter in each building, including the single.
We've, we've got a water meter. Well, we, we're metering the flow of the wa- of this water.
Yes, we are.
Okay, got it, thank you.
We are.
Into the Valley Inn.
Into the Valley Inn.
Right, I understand.
So, I don't, I just, um, I think it puts us in a hard, because we are basically taking the powers' position um, that the Valley Inn is responsible for providing them water, I think.
And that's what our council said, right?
Well, what are we gonna do, take the position that we're gonna, what, dig off, dig and, and we're gonna put a separate line in?
Well, I.
Didn't our, didn't our council say that?
That we still need to put the meter in the house, is what Stephen's email says.
Why?
Well, could I ask you a question from a completion backwards principle? If we put a meter into their house.
Yeah.
The amount of water that goes into their house would be deducted from the Valley Inn's commercial account, and the Valley Inn, if they have to provide water to these people.
Correct. Right.
The Valley Inn would only pay the minimum water charge for a house of that size.
They would pay the flat rate fee.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
For the house, that's correct.
Okay.
And I think.
So, has that solution been brought to anybody?
No, um.
But isn't that the only solution?
Uh, I, yes, and that's what I am asking, is for you to say that that's the solution, so that I can go back to the powers and the Valley Inn and say, here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna put a meter in, we're gonna put a meter in the powers' house, we're gonna deduct that meter from the, the reading in the Valley Inn, we're gonna build the Valley Inn.
And the flat rate for the house.
No, we're gonna build them, the commercial rates for their water.
The commercial, plus the flat rate for the house.
Well, then we have to make a decision on who is gonna receive the flat rate bill. And I think town council is telling us that the Valley Inn should receive that flat rate bill.
Yeah, the, exact, yeah, right.
Okay, and, and I'm okay doing that.
As far as, I'm, as far as I'm concerned, the, 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 the only one that connects to the town's facility here is the Valley Inn.
Is the Valley Inn.
The only connection to our lines is the Valley Inn.
Right.
After that, I mean, suppose, suppose, I don't even know, suppose we had a duplex in town, we have a line coming in, went from apartment A to apartment B. Well, we would bill, well, the, in a duplex situation, if there were two separate owners, they would receive two separate bills.
No, let me give, let me give you a better, let me give you a better situation.
Yeah, but, 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 what, there's one wa- but, yeah, right, but, well, I, that's a bad example because we don't meter that water, but.
I'll give you, I'll give you a better one, if you have a house, the li- line comes into the house and there's a line that comes out of the house that goes to your garage where you've got
Right.
a toilet and a sink, you, you don't get two separate bills.
No, you get one bill.
Right, so.
I, I, to me, I start with the, I look at this as the principle of connection, now, this guy, now, the Valley Inn, if they believe, if the Valley Inn believes that they don't have to support this guy, they have a right. they have a right, I would assume, they can go down and turn the valve, shut them off.
Shut them off.
Well.
No, I'm not encouraging them to do that.
Well, no, 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 but, um, yeah.
But they've got a dispute between the two of them, I, this is not a dispute with us.
Can they do that? I mean, is there a way to shut that, that off, could they do that?
Probably, there's probably a valve, I'm sure there's a valve to the house.
Shut the valve? He's getting his water from the Valley Inn, he's not getting water from us.
Do you have a copy of the deed there?
Uh.
I couldn't open it, so.
Nice. I even hate to ask, what about the sewer?
Well, the sewer, I think, comes through the other way, comes out of the house, goes through the Valley Inn and then into our sewer.
We bill them for the sewer?
There's no separate sewer.
Huh?
Do we bill them for the sewer?
Well, yeah, the Valley Inn, not the Powers.
See, the problem is, this was originally, when this was built.
It was set up, it was set up illegally.
It was set up as the owners lived in this house, but it was part of the Valley Inn.
That's right. That's right.
And somebody sold it off separately, and at the point in time they sold it off, they never corrected these things.
That's correct. And the town, somebody created a separate lot, because we have a separate lot for the house. And we've been billing it as a totally separate lot and a separate property. So, we, at the time that this lot was created, we should have said, you have to find a way to, to provide a separate water and sewer service to this house.
Did, did we say that?
No, we did not, the town did not.
Oh, right.
That's what I'm saying, is when, when we allowed the creation of this.
Lot.
Lot, we should have.
No one ever thought about.
No one ever thought about water and sewer.
Right, yeah, connecting.
Because the Bezzars were still in there and they were deeded water and sewer by the Valley Inn.
I wonder if he's got a separate electrical?
I don't know.
See, I, I, you see what.
Uh, tell me a sewer and water line is.
See, the first part is, we've got a, we're getting in the middle here of a deed argument.
Right.
It's a very.
And, so the first thing is, these two parties gotta resolve, in my mind, they need to resolve what it is. I, you know, so on sewage, do we charge them a flat fee?
Not the Valley Inn, it's all based on their water usage.
Also, it's based on.
Right.
Their water and sewer.
I, I would take the, that, 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 that we're, that the town is collecting, it's, we are getting all water sewer money.
There's a flat sewer.
Yeah.
For residents.
Yes, from the Valley Inn.
No, we're getting it from both properties, because it's going through the Valley Inn.
That's correct, we are getting our money.
Right, we're, we're not losing money, I mean, so we're, we're okay.
That's correct. That's correct.
We're now getting in the midst of an argument between two private parties.
Right.
And the first thing I'd say is, look, we're getting our money, as far as we're concerned, you two resolve this, let us know how you plan to resolve it, and then we'll figure out how to do the billing. But we're not gonna tell you what the billing is gonna be, we're simply gonna keep collecting what we've collected.
Okay. Okay, and I'm, and I'm fine with that, I, I just, it is a hard.
I. I'm not gonna break into the guy's house to put a meter in there, I mean.
Oh, no, 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 no. But. And every other single residence, single family residence in this town has a water meter. This is the only.
Well, be careful, they think, look at the Golden Eagle. All of those are actually individually owned, we don't meter those.
No, single family houses is what is every single one of them.
But this is the only instance in which we have this in town.
This setup, this ever came up.
Yeah, it's the only one like it in town.
Well, I, I take that back, isn't, isn't there a separate apartment also in the Snowy Isle like this? Isn't there a separate living apartment?
No, they combined all of them, they're all into one.
They did, okay, alright.
There used to be one condo.
Yeah, that was standing off on its own.
That was separate, right, in, keeper, but they, everything is in one property.
I don't wanna, in my own guidance area, it's.
I, I like what you said, Bill.
Don't, we're not getting involved in a private, a dispute between two private parties. We're getting our money, you let us know when you figure this out, we'll more than gladly do whatever both of you agree is the appropriate thing to do.
Okay.
Now, if we weren't getting our money, that'd be another issue, but we're getting our money.
Okay, so we will move on and tell them to work it out more, if, if they help them, and once they've worked it out.
If I have the Valley Inn, I'd just go down and turn the valve. You're gonna get his attention, yeah?
Well, it's just before the road closes.
That's public, yeah, but, let's, if something like that were to happen, we are providing public water to them.
And we do, and we haven't shut our valve off.
No, we haven't, but I'm, I.
If the Golden Eagle decides to shut the water off to one of its apartments, what recourse do we have?
I, I don't know.
If they chose to do that, can we?
I don't know, I, I don't know that they can do that, it's a pri- it is a public water supply, and I don't think that a private entity has the right to shut off someone else's water.